So as a preliminary matter, April 6, 2020. My name is Pete Pecos. I'm the current Chair for the Newbury Planning Board. Please permit me that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Larry Murphy.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. George Morse.
Yes.
George Leslie Matthews.
She is just joining.
Okay. Woody Knight.
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Mary Stone.
Here.
Thank you, Mary. Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor.
Here.
Thank you, Emily Noble.
Here.
Thanks, Emily. Town Council, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. Lisa Mead.
Present.
Thank you, Lisa. Anticipated speakers presenters on the agenda, please respond in the affirmative. Stephen Wood.
I don't see him yet.
Okay. Eric McLean.
I don't see him yet either.
Hey, Steve Sawyer.
Here this time.
Thank you, Steve. Mark DiPiero.
Don't see him here yet.
Okay, Matthew Gaines.
I'm here.
Thank you. Good evening. This is April 6, 2020, open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board. It is being conducted remotely consistent with chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, which extends the governor's March 12, 2020, order superseding certain provisions of the open meeting law until July 15, 2022. The order suspends the requirements of the open meeting law to have all meetings and publicly accessible physical location allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convening by video conference via Zoom as posted on the planning board's agenda, which can be found on the town's website and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID 83271413056 or by calling 9292056099 and entering the meeting ID when prompted. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that all attendings are participating by video and or telephone conference. The meeting is also being broadcast live through local access cable channel nine on Zoom and at W W T N C TV.org, and the recording will be available on the Newbury Access YouTube channel. Meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or the representatives may be called upon to speak and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. Before we turn to the first item on the agenda, please permit me to cover some ground rules for clear and effective conduct of our business and to ensure accurate minutes. As the Chair, we'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will go down the list of board members inviting each by name to provide any comment, question, or emotions. Please hold until your name is called further. For all attendings except board members and staff, please remember to mute your computer with the mute button or on your phone with a star six toggle to mute or unmute when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones, tablets, or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you and you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in discussions with other board members, please do so through me. Take care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comments, there'll be an opportunity for public comment and questions during public hearings. After board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and or ask questions as follows. I will see questions and comments through the Zoom raise hand function. For video conference participants to raise your hand, hover over the bottom of the Zoom window below the photo gallery and click on the gray hand that appears. Please ensure that your name is fully incorrectly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit star nine on your key phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order which they are listed, which is determined by the order in which people click the raise hand functions. Each participant each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address and then ask a question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant participant or his or her representative the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you've been given the floor for your questions. I will then continue down the list of the raise hand column and afford participant applicant representative an opportunity to speak. Sure to be any physical or electronic submittal of questions or concerns. They will be noted for the record. And again, the participant advocate representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues have not been raised. Each vote taken this evening will be conducted by a roll call. Right. So looking at our agenda, we do have a couple of public hearings that will be starting at 7:15. Until then, I think what we'll go through some of our liaison reports. So we'll start first with our select board. Leslie, if you're able to give us a report.
Sure. The Select Board report, they went through the warrants for the upcoming town meeting. And they also accepted grants and that was, you know, the bulk of what was what we needed to know for this upcoming meeting. See, and and there were approved draft minutes for 3122 and 3822. That's not much in the town administrator's report because they went through all the warrants and you know, to approve them on how they would be put on for the town meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Leslie. Larry, ZBA.
I don't. But the regular monthly meeting is on the 21st, so two weeks from tomorrow.
Okay, beautiful. Martha, MVPc?
A couple of things on 317, they had their their commissioners meeting. They have, they announced they've hired a new community planner. And Nate Robertson also went, did a presentation on the Regional Economic Development Organization. They've just been designated that for the Merrimack Valley area, which is, I think I'd mentioned that before, and that's, that's a very cool thing. And on the 24th, the planners meeting, they had a kickoff meeting for the stormwater bylaw review, which they're undertaking using the Mass Hatabon bylaw review tool. I think I've mentioned that previously as well. So I'm the point person for that, but I also want to get Samantha involved because of conservation and conservation's role in stormwater permitting.
Okay, great. Conservation, conservation meant last night. Let's see. Going over the agenda, I think the only thing that really pertains to us at this point in time is 170 Orchard Street. The request to extend the order of resource delineation was approved, and I think that's good for three years. That's all that I think is right now for conservation. We had one commissioner that resigned last yesterday. So that's what's going on with conservation. So back to our agenda, let's see what else we have that we can do prior to some 15. How about a planners' report? Do you have enough time for that, Martha?
Yeah, sure. It's not that long. So a few things, I did give the presentation on the MBTA communities guidelines and drafted and submitted the, our comment letter on, on, on the guidance. Town Council, Lisa Mead did review that as well before that went in. And then I have some reports on a number of projects that are under construction right now. Tom Z came in today requesting to be on the agenda for the next meeting. The pumps for the septic system are supposed to be installed by the end of this week. So his hope is that he can get the lot releases on one and eight moving forward.
Excuse me, if I can just interrupt for a second. Is he looking to have to drill or blast as far as getting all that stuff done, or has he already done that?
I think it's all been done. They did a lot of blasting more than they anticipated. So it's, I think it's really a kind of a supply chain issue right now, getting the pumps in and getting those installed. I think that's the last, the last.
And I go down, go by there on a regular basis, and it looks like everything's coming along pretty well.
And I've been, had some communication with his engineer about the A and R for the, the Witchstone Father Stone parcel. I have not heard yet back from him yet, but hopefully that will get going. So 108 Main Street, Mr. Colin Tony has actually pulled all of his equipment off the site. Yeah. After pushing, pushing to get going on this. He said it's needed elsewhere. We don't have a date yet for when he's going to start again. Sam and I talked about it this morning and also had some emails from Joe. There are trees all over the place. There's a you know, a pile of dirt, which is not stabilized and given the rain that's going to be coming. Sam and I talked.
Looks like it could flow right down into what they dug out.
Yeah, so it's going to put straw waddles around it. That, that was an acceptable solution. Yeah. Sam contacted him about that. So.
And it looks like he's also run into the same thing as far as like blasting or to get the, the stone out of there, to get the road through and the driveways through.
Yeah, I mean, when we did our site walk, there's certainly a lot of ledge on site. So.
Now that a lot of it's been revealed, so it's interesting to watch it as it go along, it goes along.
Also, he doesn't have the proper materials down for the wetland crossing. So once we know he's going to be going back out there, Sam, Joe, and I will go out and take a look and have a, have a discussion with him. 217, 221 High Road, they want to do some additional clearing behind one of the lots. I suggested we have a meeting out there. Probably won't happen until next week, but that will include Joe and Sam and I to talk about that. Doesn't appear to affect that filter strip, but we want to make sure.
Is this on Gadsden?
It's on Gadsden, yeah. Governor's Academy, the French Student Center, they actually want to close that out where I got a PDF of the as-built plan. I've requested hard copies, so I'll give one to Joe and we'll get back to them on that. So that may be on the agenda for the next meeting if possible. And we have received an as-built plan for the golf center. So we will be setting up a meeting to discuss that as well.
I'm sorry, Martha, I misunderstood. You said you have received a.
Finally received an as-built plan for the Newbury Golf Center.
Oh, wow.
And how many times, how many years does that go back? They, you know, submitted it.
No, we, they, the public hearing for the modifications started in May of 2018, I think. So it lasted all the way through construction. So here we are.
Does this mean that they're they want to review and change some of what?
This is basically the as-built plan that they need to have reviewed and approved before we can close out the project and before he can get his performance bond released.
So as-built meaning what?
Meaning it reflects everything that was right, right.
And then we have to say what, that maybe some.
So it needs to reflect what they actually did build. So Joe will be reviewing it. So stormwater management, the buildings, you know, all.
Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I think that's all I have, and it looks like it's just about 7:15.
That is the perfect timing, Martha. So thank you for making that fly that way. Well, actually, we have one. So I'm going to have to just.
I could have extended it.
One minute. Tick tock.
Yep, I got.
It sends dirty water.
Beautiful. Okay, so since it is 7:15, we're going to start our public hearings. First public hearing is going to be a special permit application for ground mounted solar pole installation. It's 75 Boston Road, Newbury landfill map, R36 lot 27 applicant alliance, Newbury, one LLC owner of the town of Newbury. So we're going to open the session. So let's see, at the March 2nd session of the public hearing, the board reviewed materials submitted by the applicant, including revised plans. Swept path plan for the fire apparatus and a letter responding to the comments from the town's peer review engineer and town's town staff. And let's see, we also went through the special permit review criteria for the solo projects. And based upon our review, the planning director was directed to draft a decision reflecting the sense of the board.
Great presentation, I must say.
Great. The board voted to continue the public hearing to March 16th. On that day, the applicant requested a continuance to today's meeting. So there was notice of the project or the draft decision on March 16th. So tonight's session, we will focus on the review of the draft decision and see if there are any outstanding questions. Martha, did I miss anything on that?
No, I think you covered that pretty well.
Okay. Let's see.
Eric is here. Eric McLean is here.
Eric, do you have anything new that you'd like to present to us? Or do you want to give us kind of a status update with regards to the firing range and any associated issues with regards to permitting?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Martha, thanks. Thanks for having me. I apologize for continuing the last time. Just had a conflict that it couldn't change. So Mr. Chairman, as of now, there's no updates on the firing range. We, I think in the, in, I think in the draft proposal, it states that we'll, we'll get that permit squared away. I don't know. I'm happy to answer any questions. I think from the last time we met, though, there's no, there's no new developments, I'll say.
Okay, great. Board members, are there any questions at this time before we kind of looked at our draft decision? Let me just run down the horn. Larry, any questions, sir?
No, right now, no.
Great. George, any questions, sir?
No.
Okay, great. Woody, any questions?
No, no questions.
Great. Leslie, any questions?
None.
Great. Mary, any questions?
No.
Okay, beautiful. Great. So is there anyone from the public that has any questions before we move into our decision? So we'll give an opportunity for public comment at this time. And I don't see anything, Martha, do you?
Yeah, I don't see any raised hands.
Okay, then I'm going to ask Martha that you pop up our draft decision or decision as it is right now. And I'm going to let you kind of, kind of go through our sections and summarize those if you wouldn't mind, Martha.
No, I wouldn't mind at all. I just need to get it up.
Okay. I'll keep an eye on the door.
Thank you. All right, can you all see that? I'll try to make it a little bit bigger for you.
I just realized something, Martha. When we do this, we can't keep an eye on the door.
You can. It shows up at the very top.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, it's not quite as easy as.
Yep.
All right. So shall I go through it kind of section by section and then see if any of the board members have questions or comments?
Just summarize the, the points are of importance that board should be.
All right. So the, the first part is the procedural history about the application, the public hearing, public hearing dates. I amended that to include today's date, and that can be amended further if needed. I did have a question here. We actually had no written comments or any oral comments. You know, this is kind of the standard language that interested parties participated in the proceedings and submitted comments on the project, both orally and writing. We didn't have any, so.
Or you can say an opportunity, perhaps.
An opportunity.
To submit.
Yeah, I'll clean that up. The next is a list of the submitted materials and information, including the original application materials. The letters that we received from town staff, Chief Jankrin and James Sarette review letters from Joe Sirwodka, the response letter from ASO, Western and Sampson, and then the revised drawings that the the, what were submitted for final approval, the swept path analysis. DEP approval of the post closure use. The CONCOM's order of conditions, and then I added the letter from Eric McLean, which you've all seen regarding the decommissioning bond. Any questions on any of that? Next section is the project description, which is, you know, the acres of land, the size of the the size of the array, what the environment is, the wetlands, AC, EC, all of that stuff. What they're planning to build. And interface with the existing stormwater system there. The next is the findings and determinations, and this is based on the review that the board did of the the criteria, the review criteria for the project. And you know, the board's determination that it substantially complied with the standards that are specified in the bylaw. And then the final section is the, is the decision and the, the conditions of approval. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you would like to go through, through those one by one.
Let's do that.
So do you want me to read them or?
If you would, please.
Okay. So the first one is after all approvals have been obtained and prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall enter into a land lease agreement with the town of Newbury pursuant to terms and requirements as agreed upon between the applicant and the town. No building permit shall be issued until the lease agreement has been executed.
Okay, any questions or comments on that from anyone?
No.
The next one, number two, there is actually a revision to this one, which I've sent to the board. Mr. McLean had requested that this changed, be changed from within 30 days of issuance of the special permit to read prior to issuance of the building permit. That is because there are things like the land lease agreement, which need to be done and likely the surety would not be provided before all of that is, is ironed out. So prior to issuance of the building permit seemed to be a reasonable alternative. The other question here is actually the amount of the surety itself. It's something that had not been discussed previously. We did receive a letter from Mr. McLean yesterday with an estimate for labor to remove the installation as well as estimate of salvage value. And I sent the board this morning, information from the Borrego project that we had approved previously. At that time, we actually based the, the amount of the surety on a certain dollar value per per megawatt. In that case, it was $50,000 per megawatt. So I think you know, as I, as I noted, this is information that we just received. The board hasn't had an opportunity to review it.
So what I might suggest, Martha, is let's come back to this and let's go through the things that are kind of easy and tidy, and then we can have a discussion about that. How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Number three, the project shall comply with the 10 BDA above ambient standard for noises required concerning to 310 CMR 710. The next, next several ones are requirements from the fire department based on their letter. The access road shall be improved to be no less than 11 feet in width with no less than three feet encroachment to the travel path and be able to withstand the weight of a vehicle weighing 75,000 pounds with a turning radius of 34 feet as set forth in the December 8, 2021, letter from the Newbury Fire Department. The applicant shall be responsible for the removal of any buildup of snow on the access road in excess of eight inches, and that's language that we standardly put in, in our other solar approvals regarding snow removal. The police department firing range target shed shall be relocated to provide clear access along the entire length of the access road and prevent dead ends. Final location of the firing range will be as approved by the town. I've highlighted this last sentence, which says the applicant shall be responsible for obtaining all required permits related to the relocation of the firing range. So it, and I did get a comment request from Mr. McLean that that language be modified. I don't know if you'd like him to address that now or come back to it.
And let me just, the applicant should be responsible for obtaining all permits and also as well as responsible for moving it in addition to obtaining permits, correct?
Well, we're hoping that it can be sort of rolled into the construction.
Okay.
Contract, but that hasn't actually been finalized.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, so I understand. I think ASO understands that this needs to happen to make the, the project occur. I think this would be more of a discussion we want to have with the landlord about who's responsible for what. That, and that discussion hasn't happened yet. I think from a planning board standpoint, a special permit, I would agree that, you know, maybe the, the board would want to make sure that it's done properly before I start construction and that all, all permits are obtained. Right? But the, the land lease has not been worked out with the landlord yet, and this gets a little gray because the landlord is the town. But I'm trying to keep things in the proper bucket. And I would say that, you know, from, from my point of view, in this meeting, it would be, I understand the board's desire to make sure that it is done properly and that the, that all permits are obtained, and I would be fine having in here that all permits, you know, that, that I ensure all permits are obtained prior to starting construction. Not necessarily that, that I'm agreeing to, to, to pay for them or do them yet. By the way, I agree with Martha, I think we probably can all be wrapped in one, but that, that discussion hasn't happened with the landlord yet.
Okay, understand. Thank you, Eric. Okay.
So do we want to address this highlighted language right now?
I think it's appropriate that it should be in there that, that would be the case. Let me just run down and see if other board members have that mindset. Larry?
Yeah.
Thank you. George?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes.
Okay, very good. There you go, Martha.
Okay, so I think it was, I think the language was actually something along the lines of the applicant shall be responsible for ensuring that all required permits are obtained.
All right.
So.
Sure, you rather than obtaining.
Back to that. Next one, number five, the applicant shall provide clearly identified emergency disconnects or isolation switches as noted in the December 8, 2021, letter from the Newbury Fire Department. Number six, the applicant shall provide approved access boxes attached to the fence adjacent to the gates at either end of the property for the secure storage of keys needed for the Newbury Fire Department to access the property and to access any locked emergency shut offs, as noted in the December 8, 2021, letter from the Newbury Fire Department. The boxes shall be Knox brand with key requirements coding to by field, which is very important for them. Number seven, the applicant shall provide at no cost to the town of Newbury training from the installer of the solar panels for the Newbury Fire Department to educate the fire department on how to shut down units and work safely around them should there be an emergency. Number eight, the applicant has not proposed any structure, storage facilities, or buildings as part of its application. No such structures, storage facilities, or buildings may be added to the property without a modification of the special permit. Number nine, prior to the start of site preparation and construction, other than that required for surveying or testing or for the installation of erosion control measures, a pre-construction meeting shall take place to include at a minimum, the applicant, the contractor, the board's review engineer, the planning director, the conservation agent, and representatives from the Newbury Department of Public Works and Fire Department. Number 10, at the pre-construction meeting, the applicant shall discuss construction schedule and sequencing and review the limit of work. The limit of work shall be clearly staked prior to the pre-construction conference. 11, the applicant shall provide the planning director with a detailed construction schedule at or before the pre-construction conference, and shall notify the planning director of any changes to the schedule as site work and construction proceed. 12, if any work is done beyond the limit of work, the building commissioner will immediately issue a cease and desist order until appropriate remediation measures are identified and approved. If identified issues are not remedied within a reasonable amount of time and to the planning board satisfaction, the board may rescind the special permit. Thirteen, hours of construction for grading and other noise related other related noise generating site work and earthwork shall be limited to eight AM to five PM Monday through Friday. Hours of construction for other activities shall be seven AM to six PM Monday through Friday. There shall be no construction activity on Saturdays or Sundays. Fourteen, no blasting will be allowed if the applicant determines that blasting is necessary on the property. A modification of this special permit shall be required. Fifteen inspections will be carried out by the town's engineering consultant during site preparation and construction. Sixteen, the applicant shall record the special permit at the Southern Essex District Registry of Deeds before any work is undertaken on the site. While the special permit shall be deemed issued when filed with the town clerk, no development activity shall take place on the property until the special permit has been recorded at the Southern Essex District Registry of Deeds, and evidence of such recording has been provided to the planning director. Seventeen, the special permit shall lapse in two years, which will not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in MGL Chapter forty eight, Section seventeen from the grant hereof if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Eighteen, the applicant shall be required to deliver to the board a final as-built plan for the project during construction. If the applicant desires to modify the approved design of the project as shown on the approved plans, the applicant shall be required to appear before the board to secure the board's approval for any substantial modifications. In the event of any such request, the board shall hold a public hearing to consider the request for the modifications to the special permit. Slight modifications to the design or layout of the arrays and or related infrastructure, which prior to construction or site work are determined by the board or it's designated to be minor, may be made to the project as field changes without the need for a modification of the special permit or public hearing. The board reserves the right to allow such minor modifications without a public hearing. Nineteen, special permit shall not be construed as approval from any other board, committee, official, department, or state agency. Conditions of approval of all other permits issued by other boards or agencies of the town of Newbury or of the state of Massachusetts shall be considered conditions of approval under this special permit. In the event that said permits contain contained conditions conflicting with the conditions hereof, the planning board reserves the right to amend the conditions of this special permit after hearing, so as to render it consistent. And finally, twenty, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall have prepared and submitted record drawings, which will indicate the actual location of all improvements, including but not limited to solar arrays, pertinent structures, and all related infrastructure. A professional engineer and lance surveyor, both of whom are licensed to conduct business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, shall stamp such plans.
Thank you very much, Martha.
You're welcome.
Other than condition four, I just want to check to see if anybody has any concerns. Larry, any concerns other than condition four?
Condition for being the decommissioning bond?
Yes.
No. All right, I think that's condition two, but.
Condition two, I'm sorry, I said condition four, yes. Thank you, Larry. Other than condition two, very good. George?
No comment.
Thank you. Woody?
No concern.
Great, thank you. Leslie?
No concern.
Thank you. Mary?
Nothing.
Okay, I think I'd like to have a little discussion about condition two, since we just received this information to the board. That was this morning. Is that right, Martha?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, and it came in yesterday.
Board received it this morning, that's correct.
Right, so the board hasn't really had an opportunity to to, I don't think, digest it or and is that, do I remember that data was from twenty eighteen?
Yeah, it was from January twenty eighteen.
So I'm not sure if that number is reflective of today's stamp, if today's values, today's dollars, or things need to be tweaked. And so I'd like to just kind of get the feeling of the of the board if we should continue this until we have this reviewed by some outside opinions for further discussion or if we should not do that and just increase the number ourselves. So Larry, I'd like to have you start the discussion, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, it seems to me that where the there might be some disagreement here is the developer is factoring in the salvage value of the material, which I don't think we did on the Borrego project. And from what I can gather, does not seem to be the norm. Because I guess because of uncertainty with that value being the future. I, I mean, if with Borrego, we went with, I think you said fifty thousand dollars per megawatt, Martha?
That's correct.
And this is what, just over a little half of half a megawatt if my?
Yes, it's.
My understanding is correct.
Five point eight two kilowatts, I think.
Yeah, so I mean, I I think we ought to be able, so that would, if we use that same formula, this should be somewhere between twenty five and thirty thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken.
Right, the question is, as Pete noted, that data goes back to January of twenty eighteen, so there, you know, there may be some some updates to that that the board might want to to get information on and consider.
Okay.
Well, I'm be interested to hear what the rest of the board thinks, but I don't know, who would we go to for this? For additional information?
I I I think that we could actually refer this to town council, who, you know, deals with solar projects on a regular basis.
Fine, I'm fine with that.
Thank you, Larry. George?
Oh, yeah, I concur. I think town council ought to review it. It'd be very good to have her opinion, and I would look forward to it.
Okay, thank you, George. Woody?
I agree with both Larry and George. If town council could take a look at it and get a better idea what what it should be.
Okay, thank you, sir. Leslie?
Yeah, I agree enough time has gone by that I'm sure the numbers have changed dramatically and it should be reexamined.
Okay, thank you. Mary?
Yep, legal review needed.
Okay, okay.
I have a comment, Peter.
Yes, George.
At the end of that, we talk about adjusting for inflation every five years. And the way it's going right now, it might be better to turn that down to say three years or two years.
Very good point.
It's going up very sharply.
That's a very good point, George. Thank you. All right, so I'm getting a sense of the board that we just have to have this, the decommissioning bond aspect looked at. So that being the case, I'd entertain continuing this public hearing. So we could look at April twentieth at seven fifteen. Okay, I just need to know who who made the first motion?
George.
Thank you, George. George had the motion and the second was?
Second.
Thank you, Woody. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion, discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you, discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Leslie?
None.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Question, Mary?
No.
Thank you. How do you vote on the motion, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Wonderful. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful, and chairs in favor as well. Good, beautiful. Did we? We don't have any, we haven't had any public comment on this, is that right, Martha?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, then let's continue with our agenda, which will be old business, one of five High Road or OSRD. So this is going to be, first, we're going to be talking about a request for approval of proposed grading and utility layout changes and other associated changes to the building footprints, changes to the exclusive use area. One, two, three, and four. So let me just try to summarize if I could. At our last meeting, the applicant presented grading changes for the exclusive use areas, the EUAs of one through four. Some changes appear to be significant, e.g. addition of retaining walls on the sides, street side of two of the ex- exclusive use areas and inconsistencies with the elevations in the drain swell. Some board members are concerned that the proposed modifications might rise to the level of being major modifications or requiring a public hearing. The applicant requested an opportunity to further revise the grading plans for the UAs one through four, and they have had them reviewed by the board's peer review engineer, and the board agreed to that. This has been done, the applicant has submitted revised plans of the UAs one through four. Joe's worker has reviewed and provided his comments. I'm going to ask applicant to present revised grading plans for the UAs one through four, please.
You should be all set, Steve.
All right, can you, good evening, Steve Sawyer with DCI. Can you see the screen?
Yes, and can you unmute just a touch, Steve?
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll just run down the street one. So here's the first two on the left, number one and two. So it's, we've actually, you can see there was some Joe had asked us to put the old contours in. We had put the old contours in a screen back red, which we've done. The swale is actually right, we've absolutely mimicked the swale running down the north side, so we've not changed that whatsoever. Also, the grading patterns on each of the lots are basically the same, the same as the approved plan, so there's no changes there. I think originally we had some walls, we had a wall between one and two and along this area here. The grading has been revised, so there are no walls needed, needed any for the for the for this grading. And for the most part, the grades match match the existing. One thing that's come up with the layout of these buildings, the road, the the eve lines are very low, they're only about fifteen feet above the grade, so it makes sense, it made sense to add some drip drip edges where the roof lines are low. So one thing we did add was some drip edges in appropriate locations, which further enhance stormwater infiltration on the site. I believe Joe's final comment letter agreed with that. So there's units one and two. Here we are with three and four. The grading, as you can see, follows the exact approved grading plan for the swale. Similarly, we have the the rear area grading off to the swale, the front area grading off to the to the drainage system that that flows into the infiltration basin. And I think, you know, there was a couple, couple rounds of reviews with Joe is very, very productive. And I I believe he agreed the fact that there was no no impact or the the grading with these, with the custom homes, with the final homes meet the intent and the proposed grading of the approved plan.
Thank you, Steve. Martha, Joe's comments were submitted to the board members, correct?
That's correct.
His comments are in agreement as well.
Yes.
Okay, great. Should I stop sharing or keep going? Is there anything else you'd like to share with us, Steve?
Um, I think that's it.
Okay, cool. Great, I think we can probably stop screen sharing. Thanks very much.
If I may, I'll just read Joe's final comment about the infiltration drip trenches. He says those are now depicted on the plan for units one through nine, so they've been added to five through nine. They weren't shown on the previous plan. But he says each unit appears to have different trench layouts, so the site contractor will have to follow the plan exactly. The trench should work well at infiltrating roof runoff, given the sandy soils and low groundwater conditions. So.
Okay, so now the question is, as redesigned, are the proposed modifications substantial major or required in public hearing or they are minor and substantial and they do not? Because the condition five is is the the threshold for that. So Larry, I'm going to ask you the question, minor or major?
I would say minor.
Thank you, sir. George, same question to you?
Minor.
Thank you, same question to you, Woody?
Minor.
Thank you. Leslie, same question to you?
Minor.
Thank you. And Mary, same question to you? I don't see Mary right now. But the chair is also in a agreement that they would be minor. So the board, the board can therefore take a vote with regards to this. Do we have any other conditions that we need to be thoughtful of with regards to this that I'm missing, Martha?
I think I haven't reviewed it, but I think probably the conditions for five through nine would would mostly pertain and then potentially an added condition, just kind of picking up on Joe's note that the site contractor will need to you know, follow the plan carefully for the the stone infiltration.
Okay. That being the case, I think I'd like to have you Martha, start a draft to record the vote with the conditions for approval for our next meeting. Larry, you in agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, with regards to our next issues, which are our documents, our legal documents, I see that we have counsel here. Lisa, can you just kind of give us a an overview of what's where we are with our condo master deed, a declaration trust, declaration of restriction, public access easement, tripartite agreement, and the bond estimate?
Sure, Mr. Chair, and good evening. So as part of the approved decision subdivision or OSRD decision, the applicant was required to get a sign off on the master deed and the trust. And as you know, there's a conservation restriction required to be applied to the open space areas. And so in order to secure the rights to that conservation restriction and make sure all of the buyers and lenders on the property know about the conservation restriction, we also required a declaration of restriction to be recorded now, which forecasts that there will be a conservation restriction when it's eventually approved by DEP. So we have the the declaration of restriction that's been reviewed as well. Both the condominium documents refer to your decision as well as the conservation restriction. In addition, in order to get to the open space, of course, you have to travel down this road and back to the parking area, and in order to do that, since it's a private road, the public needs an easement over that road into the open space. And so an open space, excuse me, an easement has also been drafted, and that I've reviewed and approved as well. So the declaration of restriction, the easement, the master deed, and the trust are all approved and reviewed. The applicant has been cooperative in making sure the changes that we requested were included. There are still some final details that need to be added or changed in the documents, but they're they're basically inserting numbers, they're not there's no, there's no substantive other than inserting numbers and finalizing the documents. And then there's the tripartite agreement, so you know that there's security that has to be given to assure that the infrastructure is completed properly. The tripartite agreement has been reviewed and approved both by ourselves and the bank. And Joe Suwaka has reviewed the the amount of the tripartite agreement to complete the infrastructure. And he has said that that is accurate. I think that letter came in today. So the tripartite agreement to complete the rest of the infrastructure is six hundred ninety three thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And so essentially what that does, and I know you don't always deal with tripartite agreements, but the bank through whom the loans for the property and development are being issued will hold that amount of money until they get affirmation from the board that it can be released to that that those sections, the infrastructure are done and it will. that those sections, the infrastructure are done and it will go down, the developer will come in and ask for releases along the way to reduce that amount of money. But you will be secured in making sure that that infrastructure is completed in accordance with your decision. So at this point, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions on any of this. But I think if the board were to vote to approve these documents and authorize the chair to execute them when they are finalized and all the signatures are received after I review them, that would be acceptable.
Wonderful, thank you very much, Lisa. Matt, do you have anything that you'd like to add to what Lisa has just said?
I do not. Lisa was, I just want to say Lisa was wonderful to work with. We had a very collegial back and forth over the last few weeks and we got to this point and I greatly appreciate Lisa and Brian Winters' assistance in that as well. And if the board has any questions about the document specifically, I'm happy to answer them, but other than that, I have no other comments.
Okay, great, Matt. Thanks very much, appreciate your comments. Martha, is there anything else that we need to consider here?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, let me see, is there anything else that the applicant would like to respond to or make comments on?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, Steve. All right, so then I would accept a motion to approve the condominium master deed and declaration of trust, public access easement and declaration of restriction. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Moved.
I can.
So moved.
Step at it, if you'd like. I move to approve the condominium master deed and declaration of trust, the public access easement and the declaration of restriction for 105 High Road, Seago Condominium, subject to finalization by the applicant and final review by town council.
Thank you for the motion, Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Leslie. On the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No discussion, no.
Thank you. George, any discussion?
No.
Thank you. Woody, any discussion?
No discussion.
Thank you. Leslie, any discussion?
None.
Thank you. Mary, any discussion?
No.
Okay, great. On the motion, Larry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Woody. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Leslie. Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Wonderful, and the chairs in favor as well. With regards to the tripartite agreement, I'd entertain a motion with regards to the tripartite agreement, the bond estimate. Larry?
I move to approve the tripartite agreement and bond estimate and authorize the chair to enter into the same, subject to the document being completed and final review by town council.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
I thank you, Woody, for the second. On the motion, any discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
Thank you, George. Any discussion?
No.
I thank you. Woody, any discussion?
None.
I thank you, Woody. Leslie, any discussion?
No.
Thank you, Mary, any discussion?
No.
I thank you. Larry, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. George, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
I thank you. Leslie, how do you vote in the motion?
Yes.
I thank you. Mary, how do you feel about the motion? Mary? Oops, I think she froze.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
I thank you. Beautiful, chairs also in favor. Very good. Folks, 105, thanks very much for your time and your patience in getting this project to its next steps, and we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much.
All righty, continuing on our agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, did I forget something?
Now, if you don't mind, if we could go back to exclusive use areas one through four, I don't think there was actually a motion and a vote taken on those.
Oh, okay, so Larry, we're going to need a motion with regards to excuse, exclusive use, use. My tongue is getting twisted. Excuse, exclusive use area, say, that's quickly, Larry.
Exclusive use areas? Okay. I'm a little confused procedurally. I thought that we had directed Martha to draft something for us, drafted decision, you still need a motion?
Well, it was to draft a record of the vote with conditions, and there wasn't actually a vote to prove it. I think there was a sense of the board, but there wasn't actually a motion.
And there wasn't a vote.
And there wasn't a vote.
So we will need a motion to approve the proposed grading changes as they right, the grading changes and related changes one through four as discussed, and that they are minor and not major modifications.
Then I would so move.
Beautiful, thank you, sir. Is there a second to that?
I would second.
Okay, discussion, thanks very much, Larry. Discussion, Larry?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, George?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, Woody?
No.
Thank you. Discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Thank you. How do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you. How do you vote, George?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How do you feel?
Yes.
Thank you, chairs in favor. And Martha, thank you for keeping me on the straight and narrow, I appreciate that.
Is there anything from council, next steps?
I think I would, I was gonna email Mr. Gaines after this. They've got to get the documents signed by the bank and the developer and then over to us. And the easement has to get to the board selectmen and the conservation commission, and I've provided those motions to you, Martha.
Okay. Wonderful. I think we're all set then, correct? Correct. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me pop back to our agenda. So with regards to under new business preparation for town meeting proposed wireless communication by law. Martha, tell me where we are with this. We need a report?
So at a minimum, the board will need to make a report at town meeting saying that public hearing was held on such and such a date and that the board, you know, recommends adoption of this by, of this zoning amendment. There's probably a 50/50 chance that we will also be asked to provide, make some sort of presentation. Or that there may be questions from, you know, from residents who are at town meeting about why this is being talked about, certain provisions. I have been in touch with our consultant, David Maxon, who said that he will be available to attend. And then Tracy thought that was a good idea. So we'll just need to make sure that he's on the list of people who are non-residents allowed to speak at town meeting.
Wonderful.
So I think, you know, I think maybe we can we could do one of, well, a couple of things. One is I could have our PowerPoint in, 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 you know, in the thumb drive in my back pocket, or we could just immediately turn it over to David to do a brief summary, which might be the better way to go.
Okay, do you want to share the PowerPoint that you've put together with David, just so he has that?
I'll send it to him, and he did see it, but I'll send it to him and see if there are things that he might recommend tweaking.
Okay.
So then we can be prepared with that. It's always, it's a little hard to, it's a little hard to know in advance exactly how it will go. Sometimes it's like, it just goes to a vote right away.
Right. Okay.
But I think we should be prepared.
Okay, board members, just FYI, I will not be in town the date of the town meeting, and Larry and I have spoken about this, and he'll, he will be addressing any issues that are necessary for the board and maybe making a brief presentation. Board members, if you can be present at the town meeting, that would be wonderful to lend support to our planner as well as to our vice chair. So I'm glad that our consultant will be available, and I think that's going to be very beneficial. Larry, any thoughts?
No, I think that's fine.
Okay, great. Anything else with that, Martha?
No, I don't think so, if yeah, I think that covers it.
Okay, and this is just going to be bringing things up to where we need to be for the FCC standards, correct?
Bring things up to be compliant with federal law, current federal law, and also addressing, you know, technologies, new technologies like the small cell.
Okay.
And basically, as David put it, the goal is to make the bylaw more effective. Because it also addresses some ambiguities and inconsistencies and things. Yeah, I ask a question.
Absolutely, Mary.
If there are comments or or clarification on issue from the public or from the audience, who in our group addresses those?
So Larry will be speaking for the board, so you'll be answering those, as well as our consultant will be available as well.
Great, he's great. Okay, super, thanks.
And that's one of the benefits of having the consultant, someone who's well versed.
No, he's terrific. Very clear, straightforward.
I agree, I agree. Excellent. Any other questions from board members regarding?
As far as town meeting, would you like us all to sit together as a group?
You know, we used to do that. We used to always sit up in the front row back in the days of John Weiss, is that correct, Martha, as I remember?
That's correct. We've done that for years and years and years.
Yeah, so we can do that.
Do you have any planning board hats where?
We're getting, we're getting vests.
Yeah. Yeah, oh vests, okay.
T-shirts?
No, just vests.
We're awesome, we're the planning board guys.
Planning board team.
Ready to serve.
All right.
Let's advertise.
All right. Let's see what else we have. So minutes. Martha, we got. Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome, bye bye.
Have a good night. So we had some minutes that were that were distributed. Those were, those minutes this morning, those were the March, I'm just pulling that up.
Seventeen and the sec seventeen twenty-one and two twenty-two.
Right. And so the two twenty-two, we're going to hold, the March second, we're just going to hold off on, but did everybody get an opportunity to take a look at the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one minutes?
Yes.
They were long and detailed, and I appreciate.
Yeah, they were, they were the old school ones.
I appreciated the, 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 all of the accuracies within that. I told, I expressed to Martha this morning, I was up at 5:15 and I started reading those, and at one point I had to put them down to go get a cup of coffee.
And there will be some more of those, they've been drafted and they're getting reviewed and coming to you, so there'll be some more old school ones, and then we'll get into the new school ones.
That's good. Any questions on those minutes from anyone? Okay. I'd entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Accept the minutes.
George made the motion.
Seventeen twenty-one.
Okay, hold on, I think George made the motion, so I'll take a second.
Second.
Thank you, Leslie, for the second. Discussion, Larry?
I'm going to abstain because AL Prime is on there.
That's right, thank you very much, sir. Discussion, George?
No.
Discussion, Woody?
No.
Okay, discussion, Leslie?
No.
Discussion, Mary?
No.
Okay, how do you vote, George? Accepting?
No comments.
Okay, so we'll accept the
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Woody? Yes?
Yeah.
Leslie, how do you vote?
No discussion, yes.
Yes, okay, great. And Mary, how do you feel?
Yes.
Beautiful, chairs in favor as well. Beautiful, Martha, another set of minutes down, thank you.
Get those posted, and I'm partway through the three to twenty-two.
Okay, and Larry, I approve your, I very much appreciate your energies with our other minutes, thank you very much.
Yeah, I have, if you recall, I think I probably should just report that per the vote of the board two or three meetings ago that authorized me as vice chair to review and approve prior minutes, certain prior minutes. I have reviewed and I do approve the minutes from November seventh, two thousand and eighteen, December fifth, two thousand and eighteen, January sixteen, two thousand and nineteen, February sixth, two thousand and nineteen, February twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, and March sixth, two thousand and nineteen.
Excellent.
So we can check those off the list anyway.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, get those posted as well, so.
I think it's, I think it's time for everybody to realize how much work goes into these minutes. To thank those who are involved, and I did this last time, but I really, it's amazing, but I finally found a replacement for melatonin.
Especially looking, you know, at the March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one minutes, you know, the amount of, you know, projects that we were looking at, in the amount of detail.
Oh, my God.
There was a lot of lifting going on, and so that occupied a lot of space, it really, really did, so I'm glad that we're done, you know, able to get through that and survive the storm and get to the other side of it, so.
It was an extraordinary time, and many, many, many thanks to Emily for actually doing the minutes of these things, because it's, it's.
I, you know, I so appreciate it. My very first meeting, Rachel said to me, it was only a half an hour meeting, she said, don't get used to this. And so I heeded her words.
Only, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion if there, the motion is so to be entertained, to adjourn for the evening, unless anyone would like to continue our meeting.
A motion to adjourn?
Well, thank you, Leslie, there's a motion, is there a second?
I can.
Ah, thank you, Larry, there's a motion, there's a second. All right, any discussion, Larry?
No discussion.
George, discussion?
No.
Wonderful, Leslie, discussion?
None.
Wonderful. Woody, discussion?
No discussion.
Mary, discussion?
No, just thanks, everybody.
All righty, how do you vote, Larry?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. George, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Woody, how do you vote? Thank you. Leslie, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mary?
Absolutely.
All righty, everyone, thanks very much. Martha and Emily, thank you, and everyone have a very good evening.
All right.
Excellent. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Everybody.